All right, we'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Calling the roll, we have one absence tonight, that'll be noted. And we had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting, and that explains our tardiness. So we'll go right to the report of the superintendent, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lingman. Tonight, we'd like to honor Lexi Nifer, one of our students here at the Pots Grove High School, to be the winner of the 25th anniversary logo design for Bonhomie Adult Center. So Lexi, I saw you back there, if you'd like to come up, please. We'd like to present you with-
That's right, I believe she won pretty decisively last year as well.
On behalf of the board, we'd like to present you with a certificate of recognition to keep up the good work. This is what, two for two? What are your future plans? Very good, have anything in the pipeline to work on yet? We thank you and continued success at the high school and the Western Center.
Can we get a picture of the student?
Okay, so my teacher had actually been offered to create the logo by a friend of his, but he had lately, at the Western Center, he's been giving off these little minor jobs of creating logos to his students to kind of get a sense of what it'd be like working in the workforce and actually creating a logo. And so he handed this off to me since I won a lot of the contests from last year. I was doing a lot of good work at the school. And so I was talking with the head, I guess, head leader of Bonhomie, and we talked a lot and it definitely gave me insight about what it's like to work in the field. And so, yeah, we kind of had, it was a lot of talking, it took very long. The idea of it was just to combine the idea of having a lighthouse. That's their main focus, if you look in it, it says beacon in our community. They wanted to have a lighthouse in their logo design because they, the center is right next to a lighthouse. But the problem was that their initial design has a flower in it. And if you think about it, flowers, lighthouse, don't really go together. So definitely took some planning, I had a lot of sketches to go through. Definitely took longer than we expected. But ultimately, found a good collaborative way to figure out how to get it all to work together. And it was definitely a good experience because now I know the long process of creating a logo.
I'm gonna hold things up just a little bit because I think you're selling yourself a little bit short. To say that your teacher would hand off a small little job like this is not really accurate, right?
He does get a lot of jobs and like, obviously, he can't hand them all off to his students because we have like work to do in the classroom still. But he considers me one of his top students, so he felt that I could take on this job as well as balancing the other class projects.
And he's only going to do that to somebody that you truly trust because it's his reputation in front of his that you're representing, right?
Yes.
So I think this is a really, really very nice design. I think a lot of clean, simple lines, it'd be easy to embroider this, a lot of, it's very, very well thought-
They've already started selling jackets with the design.
There you go. So congratulations and well done.
Very proud of you.
So I've been doing this for seven minutes and the wheels have already come off. I've been told I have to officially request public comment, although I was told ahead of time that we didn't have any, any shapes. So is there anybody who would care to make public comment? Okay. All right, please, would you continue with that?
Moving on to action items and personnel. Starting with the first one, please, we'd like you to approve the professional staff resignation as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion to combine all personnel.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to combine all personnel actions. Are there any questions or comments? If no, then all in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to action items for business. Tuition contract opportunities for the school. The district government recommends the authorization to execute an agreement with the opportunity of school through the end of 2017-18 school year for one student. Tuition is $31.85 a month, beginning 2/26/18, as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It's ordered without objection.
6.2, a sponsorship agreement. We ask the board to approve the sponsorship agreement with Tri-County Area Federal Credit Union for the 2004-2018 through 2020, as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments about this?
Have we looked into doing this on our own? I mean, if we're going for a PR person to go out there and, I mean, we're 30% commissioned too, this place, and I realize part of that 30% is for the signage and such, but not all 30%, not $17,000 worth of signage. So just throwing that out there.
The answer is yes. That is part of the, part of the goals as we, as we look to move into that community relations piece. That would be something we could do on our own. Mr. Lappick, yep.
Just to confirm, before I drop the water. By doing this, it doesn't keep us two years down the road from doing it on our own if we want to re-sign a contract, correct?
Correct. Which actually means that we have, because we can-
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say no?
Okay, moving on to number seven. Item seven, committee reports. We ask the board to accept the minutes of the policy committee that was held on February 27, 2018, as submitted.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the policy committee meeting. Are there any questions or comments about the meeting or the minutes? Okay, if not, then a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Very good.
Okay, moving on to 7.2, operations and facilities. At this time, we, we ask the Facilities and Operations Committee to report out on the meeting that was held on March 13, 2018.
Basically, the meeting was entirely given over to budget issues. And we looked at various issues. We talked about Human Resources Department, the Technology Department quite a lot, and also about tuitions. And the short version of the story was, all of those budgets stayed almost completely neutral. I don't think you asked for a single increase in any one of them. Different bits of dollars moved around here and there, for sure, but there was no particular thing that I, that stands out as a major change. Other than that, the minutes are there for anybody to review and to look at. Questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, if not, a motion to approve would be ordered?
That'll be next time.
Okay, we're just reporting, are we? Okay.
Okay, moving on to new business. Number eight. I have a couple of things and then I'll, I'll pass it, pass it out to the board. We wanted to recognize our yearbook staff again. For 2017-18, our yearbook has won first place in the American Scholastic Press Association's Annual Yearbook Competition. The ASPA wrote, "Your yearbook shows excellence in the field of writing, photography, and page design, and contains elements and sections of a memorable yearbook that will be treasured for years to come." This is the eighth award this yearbook has received under Mrs. Danny Small, the yearbook advisor. So we wanted to have them here tonight. They couldn't, they could not come. So I wanted to at least make sure that they, they got their just due in front of the board. And we congratulate Ms. Small and her team. The yearbook team was last year's 17-18 team, but obviously, some of those students are on her team currently. So I just wanted to recognize her publicly. Great job, well done, and continued more success as we move to the, our this year's, this year's yearbook. So I wanted to thank her for that. And I wanted to also take time tonight to, you know, update the board. And I have Mr. Durenzo so kind enough to come, come out tonight. And Mr. Durenzo, you just might wouldn't just come up for this. As you know, you know, Mr. Durenzo, you know, is, has a lot of history when it comes to activities and, and memberships across the Pottstown area. And this past fall, the Pots Grove School District, myself, was asked to be a stakeholder in a group, a community task force, as you will, because we found out in the fall that they were closing their doors in June. And as we found out in the process, we found out that this was almost a done deal. And the people in the, from the task, the Pottstown Community Task Force obviously was very upset with this happening without any ability to, to ask how they could help or what they could do to save it. So what has transpired really over the last six months is that a lot of, a lot of the past members of the Pottstown YMCA has gotten together and with this task force to try to see what they can do to, to save the Y. And I had a meeting this afternoon, and basically, we're not accepting the recommendation of the Greater Philadelphia YMCA, which is to close the Y. We're asking them for an extension, and we're asking them to allow us to help them figure out how to keep this Y open. As far as the Pots Grove School District is concerned, we weren't specifically affected by this because they would continue to operate our before and after-school programs, YMCA. And they also just as recently as last night, agreed to give us lane time at the Boyertown YMCA for our swim team and a few members that Pottstown shares with us as well. So as far as, you know, we're concerned, there's two issues. We're concerned, they, they did not, they took care of the needs of, for the Pots Grove School District. The greater concern, I mean, that is a great concern for, for us, don't get me wrong. The next concern piece is the greater Pottstown community and what the closing of that Y brings. So, you know, I just had the opportunity to bring Gary in on this because I needed historical perspective. Because the first meeting I went to in November, the takeaway was that we were getting bamboozled. Like something's, you know, you already made your plans, you already decided what you're going to do. It took me about one meeting to figure that out. Mr. Durenzo came with me for the second meeting and thereafter. And I just thought maybe, you know, Mr. Durenzo, if you'd give us some historical insight to your perspective of this and maybe like looking ahead to, with the future.
Well, just an oversight. I'm not sure if everybody read, you know, the news articles, et cetera. But, you know, when the Freedom Foundation came in, in 2008, there was a lot of promises made to the local community that resources would be put into this community, this YMCA would be upgraded with their facilities, et cetera. And this is a longtime YMCA. This is one of the older YMCA's. It actually started on King Street in Pottstown, and then it moved there. And it was supported generously by the Smith family, from Mrs. Smith's pies. Robert Smith was one of the, was the largest donator of that because he was given a chance and opportunity to work at the, at the Y. So there's a long history of the entire community wrapped up in this Y. So as you can see, the tentacles are, are very deep and very deep rooted in this community. So with that being said, in 2008, there was a, an agreement made with Freedom Valley as well as the, the Pottstown YMCA. And again, those reasons were to increase services, to have more revenue, to be able to, to have more resources basically to serve this community. And what, what has happened since then is that those monies and that were not realized basically in Pottstown. And that's, that's really what the bottom line has been. So for the past eight or nine years, the YMCA in Pottstown has, you know, hemorrhaged, hemorrhaged maintenance-wise, hemorrhaged with facilities, et cetera, and upkeep. So, you know, like Dr. Shirk alluded to, that there was a task force formed and it seemed to be a little bit too late in the game to be able to really pull the community together to really do a comprehensive save the Y. So that's where we are right now. There is some, there is some challenges, I think. And I guess that's really going to be for the former board and, and the individuals on the task force moving forward. And, you know, obviously, we will, you know, continue to be a part of that task force. But, you know, they're, they've pretty much pulled off the table that, you know, a Y without walls is something that they're interested in, this task force. And I think we were very much in agreement with that. I think we were very much in agreement that this community needs a YMCA and a building that, that takes care of families from every socioeconomic level and specifically in the Pottstown area because, you know, not everybody has vehicular transportation. There's public transportation for those individuals. So, you know, I think this committee and this task force have been very vocal in their support of trying to somehow find a way to keep this Pottstown YMCA open. And I think with documents from the 2008 agreement starting to come forward, you know, we'll see what happens, I guess, in, in the near future. But that's the historical piece of it. So we did secure area for our swim team. Again, we got confirmation of that last night. You know, and again, everybody has to, you know, kind of make, make do. We didn't get what we, what we truly wanted, but we got what we asked for as far as being able to at least have our kids, you know, provide them with a swim team in a place that they can be, you know, that they can continue to have a program. I will tell you this, when we first started this process, communicated to the co-curricular committee, we had no options at all. I mean, we were banging our heads. We had our doors closed every single time because there's just, you know, indoor water facilities are few and far between. And the ones that are in business are, there's a lot of private clubs and a lot of private entities that ran up that space. You know, it's very much like a hockey rink. That ice time is taken till, you know, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. And for us, we didn't feel that was beneficial to our kids to have them going at, you know, try to run a program at 6:00 o'clock at night, going to a facility that could be 14, 15 miles away. We didn't think it was going to be viable. So in this instance, they did come through and we're going to be at the Boyertown Y next year, immediately after school, from 3:15 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. So that's kind of where we're at.
Well, I was just going to say, I do attend the Pots Grove Rec meetings, and that's a big concern for the kids. Where can the kids swim? So I don't know if the Y would be willing to talk to them, too.
There's a lot of stakeholders in this whole, the pool specifically. I think at one meeting that Dr. Shirk and I attended, probably 98% of the time was spent on the aquatics piece, the swimming lessons, the swim team, lap swim for seniors, et cetera. I mean, the pool is a, you know, I think what most people kind of, you know, look at from a traditional YMCA is that there's a pool there. So I think that's, that's been, I know that's been a pretty debated subject as far as, you know, a pool.
A question is, does the task force actually have any teeth or anything they can actually do? Or is it pretty much just going to be like, our recommendation is, please don't close?
Well, I think there's, there's some teeth there because the, the agreement was, is a written document. So I think that's where the challenge is going to come from. The document is now part of the task force. So I think to answer your question, without knowing what the answer is, I mean, I'm just kind of foreshadowing. I think there's going to be a challenge as far as what the document was originally written as and now what is actually happening.
I think, I think the, the synopsis that I put in your board packet, you know, pretty much clearly goes over those pieces. The past board membership and the local community members are really adamant that they, I, that they want to, they want to look at all options. And that's why they want the Y to stay, stay open. Because the, the Greater Philadelphia Y, that the task force feels, did not look at this in a timely manner to let all parties weigh in to try to help. They, they, they didn't let us in on the financials. They didn't let us in on the engineering studies. They didn't let us in, you know, on a lot of, a lot of different pieces with the financial pieces. And really unbeknownst to somebody from like the outside, as I heard these things, there was a lot of things that they just passed over and we're going to just say this building is of no value anymore to this community. And obviously, you know, there was millions of dollars given, you know, in, in return for a better place, fundraising, better facilities, that never came to fruition. So that's why I think that the, the people who were there 10 years ago have, have fight in them and they want to do their best to make sure that they can preserve this Y in the Pottstown community.
I'm sure some of you guys know that this is sort of like a little niche with me as in regards to what happened with the Y closing and such like that. And I have been following along, obviously, with the Pottstown School District Board and about their resolution and such like that. And I just want to read a little snippet of it. It was asking about their mission. It says, "The avowed mission of the Philadelphia Freedom YMCA, a nonprofit organization, is to strengthen communities, making sure that everyone, regardless of age, income, or background, has the opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive." Either they lost what their mission was, or they have a different idea of what that, that really means. Because to take the Y away from a Pottstown and then turn around and spend over $30 million to put it in a more affluent area of Upper, was it Upper Marion, or was it Upper Moreland? That just completely goes against everything that they were saying and such. One of the reasons, I understand absolutely, our school itself technically and directly may not be as affected because we now have, the students are going to have a program with the Y and such like that. And Pottstown may be more affected because of obviously the programs they had. And of course, their PEAK program, which is one of the programs they have for the before kindergarten schools and such. I could say that although we're not affected indirectly, we're absolutely going to be affected indirectly. If we don't think that some of those students aren't going to eventually move to our school district and then be part of our school program, and now they didn't receive the hopeful education that they had when they were younger, before they even come to us, that's going to be something, we live, to me, as a community, if Pottstown is like in the middle of us, around us, we're all one group. We may be two different school districts, but we're all one community in my eyes. I've always vowed that my first responsibility is to the school district. That's going to always be first. My second thing is to represent the community I grew up in, or I didn't grow up in here, but I've raised my kid here, I've raised my family, my entire house, everything. I've been here for 20 years. Personally, I would really like to join the Pottstown School District in with their resolution. Now, I, obviously, you can do this individually, I know. I would like to use the platform of our school district and our school board to also join them in that, if the school board here felt the same way.
Anybody, any thoughts?
What exactly would that entail? Or roughly?
They have a resolution that's out there. And again, if you haven't seen, there's lots of resolutions. The school board, again, like I said, doesn't have any teeth. The resolution really has no teeth. It's us pretty much saying that we completely disagree and you're doing us, the community, a disservice. And as our platform of being on the school district and school board as a whole, we disagree with what you're doing. You're doing something that's going to hurt our community. Obviously, they have it all worded, it's three pages long. It was signed obviously by- It was signed obviously by their president and obviously their, their entire board agreed unanimously on it.
Yeah, various community groups in Pottstown are, excuse me, are organizing on this matter. And this matter's moving very, very rapidly. You just alluded to something that happened less than 24 hours ago. The original plan that I heard of last, and it may have changed, is that this is going, that Y is going to close its doors the end of June. Has that changed?
It has not. That's, that's why the task force is, is moving a lot faster to try to see if we can get that, you know, get it to be continued or get it to be extended.
Yeah, because one of the things that happens is if you close a building down, especially a building that has a swimming pool and a very elderly HVAC system, it's going to deteriorate and, you know, I'm not going to, yeah. You can imagine what's going to happen to it. So an option needs to be, that we need to be aware of, there isn't a drop dead deadline being imposed by the Y that on the end of June, they're going to lock the doors and walk away from it. And I can, you know, I can sort of see Al's point because we need to, we have a drop deadline. You know, on July 1st, if there isn't a resolution to keep the place at least open or in a powered-down mode, you're going to have a problem.
Well, I personally don't have a problem with a resolution. I mean, I, I would sign it. I mean, it's not, doesn't sound like it's going to take, it's going to matter a whole lot.
It's just us joining them, obviously, maybe even joining with the task force and being in agreement that this is right.
I think I do want to thank both of you for having been involved with the task force and doing your best and, and making plans for our students and continuing to help them. I wonder if signing a resolution, because basically, we talked about two pools. We didn't build a pool, we didn't add a pool to our additions at any time because the cost and the expense of maintaining them is too much for us. Okay? So I, it's, it's not unimaginable if the cost is more than maybe the, this particular Y can bear. And the real problem, the real problem with that is that they didn't come through with the money they said they were going to come through in the support. So the first thing I would say that they are going to come back to with us and any sort of agreement is going to be, well, what are you willing to put up? What skin are you going to put in the game?
Right.
Okay? So I don't think I want to sign a resolution until I know people here are going to agree to put skin in the game to keep that Y alive, to keep it open.
And that was brought, that was, that was, that was brought up. I mean, that, that piece really today was that, what's it going to take to, to, to keep it going? Especially infrastructure and the capital improvements that need to be done like that. And then are we as an entity, and I say that, you know, we, no one was singling anybody out- out, but are we, are we part of that, that capital improvement piece? Is Pottstown School District part of that capital piece? Are, are the local banks a part of that piece? So that's really, that's now, and again, I don't want to speak for the group because they're finalizing today's minutes and they'll be getting back to us, I'm sure, within the next 24 to 48 hours on the final things that, that this task force wants to do as we do independently of the Y, not, not anymore with them. Because it's sort of, it's sort of, it's, it's us and them now. I think it's really come down to those, those pieces, so.
If the Y was bought by the Freedom Valley or merged to become part of the Freedom Valley, is there a possibility that the Y could withdraw from Freedom Valley and, and go on its own? In other words, start, there would have to be some sort of, an entity created that would be responsible for funding and keeping that thing operating? And then we'd have to find donors and sponsors in addition to the districts to do something like that. You mentioned earlier on, the Smiths, and the Smith's Pie Company was here for many, many years and, you know, there were other corporate sponsors. We don't have anybody of that size anymore, I don't think, that could step up and fill that void.
They give a grant every year. I grew up next to them, I can't think of their name off the top of my head.
But I mean, it's not going to be as easy as sending two representatives to the meetings. We're, we're going to have to start having a plan of what we're going to do, what we're going to put in or help to do. And it doesn't, it doesn't say the Pottsgrove has to pay for all of it, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is we have to have a plan. Are we going to help organize to get people to fund? Are we going to go to Diamond Federal and say, you know, would you be willing to help? Would you be, you know, go to the other entities in the area, a part of the community and get them to help support it? Are we on board for that? And if, if we are, then I say, okay, let's go ahead and sign the resolution.
Yeah, I think it's too early. Yep. It's too, it's too early.
It's a good idea. And I think once we've got some more thought, we've got a plan, I think, I think we should. But people have to understand that there's other, people are going to have a legitimate argument back to us, well, if it's so important to you, what, what money have you put in? So we have to have an answer for that. The only thing I had to say in, in regards, and I agree with you 100%, as in to how, what can we do and what can we put into the thing? The idea of, the only thing I thought of with joining them was because this would pretty much just say, we definitely disagree with what you're doing. Now, what the plan's going to be going forward, that of course still has to be all ironed out. It's just that I don't want it to be just, we're going to just stay out of it and then we'll find out afterwards. That's why I said about the resolution as in, again, the resolution as it speaks, obviously the board here does and hasn't probably seen what it's written. It's pretty much just saying that we disagree with them closing.
I would be fine with signing something like that, but I'd like to, you know, read it first. Yeah, it's just, I mean, from what you say, it sounds very reasonable, I just would like to, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a consensus to agree to consider this. So we'll, we'll, we'll get copies of that one and perhaps if you want to take a, a look at something other folks have written as a recommendation.
Sure. The task force could be involved.
Yes, and they will be.
They are.
Okay. So that's everything on that. Do you have any other items, new business, sir?
No, just thank, thank you for those, those pieces.
Sure. Nothing?
I have two things.
Okay.
One, easy, quick question. Background checks, is my understanding they're supposed to be done every five years? How do we do that? And, you know, if you want to answer next time, we're, we're important.
No, we just, we, we have Debbie Brolas, how we do it. She, she has devised a system. We, we know where everyone is in their rotation and when they're coming due, we send out a mass email to those people. And we've been getting them, knowing that they've got to be in on June 1st, so we can monitor that before the end of the school year. And every year that rotates through and she, she takes care of all of that through monitoring it that way.
Thank you. Kudos to Debbie yet again. The other topic I wanted to bring up is the student photos. Life Touch has been here for as long as I, my son's been here, many years. And I guess not everybody's as satisfied with them as, as they could be from, from the few I've spoken to. Just want to see what, is there anything we can do to kind of see what other options there are? And I don't know if it's a bidding type process, you know, just to kind of hear, especially if there's somebody local that we could support, professional photographer, company, whether it be a parent or, or otherwise, to see what they would, you know, what they could do for us and our families. Is that, anybody open to that thought or?
I was just going to ask Dave, do we get any kickbacks from that?
Please use another word.
Yes, please. The...
Did we get grants for scholarships?
The, the contracts are negotiated on a school, building by building basis and there is a commission as part of the contract and each, depending on how they, how the buildings wish to use that, it's usually used in conjunction with their PTA. They determine how to, how to use the, the funding that comes from it. But that would be, that's similar to other vendors that provide these services as well.
Okay, so just a question. You said building by building is decided, so it's more of a local decision by the principal's level?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's your direction. You can talk to the principal about getting a change or an investigation of a change. Doesn't have to go through the administration, as I understand it, yes?
No, correct. And the, the, and I, I've, I've, Mr. Parker, in my tenure, we, when I was a high school principal, we did change vendors. We, we did a, we did a, we opened it up and we changed vendors for, for a year and it's, and I'm not, not that I'm a Life Touch fan, I have no relatives who work for Life Touch or any vested, but they couldn't, they couldn't live up to, we, we, we use swipe cards, we use our ID cards for our students, our faculty, they did all those pieces, they gave us all the equipment we needed to do when we had lost and stolen cards. You know, there were so many things that they gave us that they had the capability of doing where a smaller, the smaller company did not. So we basically, you know, went back, you know, in the time, the eight years that I was at, at my previous employment, you know, we, we went back to them just because of the, of the customer service value, the quality of the work that they did. And so, I mean, it's, it's, yes, it's something that we, we could bring up at administrative meeting to look at. I would want some type of, some type of company that does schools. I mean, I can't, it can't be mom and pop first time shot because we'd be hearing it on the other side when things don't go right and we can't get the customer service pieces. But, but, you know, there's, there are pieces to that contract and Dave knows this, that can be negotiated, they're very flexible, they want to, you know, they want to do what's right. So, you know, we, we can look at other, other venues. Is it, and Dave, help me, is it contracts year to year or is it?
Yeah, I believe so. I'd have to verify, but I believe they are.
Okay.
And we have looked at this a couple times in the past as well. And I'm not sure if anybody had chosen to, to create ties at that point in time, but if they did, they've come back.
Mr. Park, we, what we do is we have our, at our next administrative leadership team meeting, we'll, we'll bring it up to our building principals and continue the conversation.
I appreciate that. I know, not having researched it at all, I know of one company that's been doing it for many years, local to, to South or North Coventry, that I can put you in touch with to see if they would like to bid on it.
I will say, Life Touch is almost like highway robbery when it comes to purchasing pictures. I just purch, a few months ago, I purchased my daughter's graduation pictures and I ordered two five by sevens for $120. Two pictures.
Just to sort of go along with that, in my outside life, I have a customer that is, does Life Touch photos, he's one of the photographers, Louisiana. And I remember about five years ago, having a conversation with him and he told me pretty much just that's their life. He says, "The competition to get into school districts is so huge because they rake in so much money." I mean, and rake in was his actual experiment, you know, terms that he used at the different districts. But he said like down south, it was also pretty big for, to really be bribes involved because they were, they were taking so much money. But that was more of a good old boys type syndicate there, so.
Okay, do we have any other new business? Okay, by virtue of the fact that we did discuss a resolution and we did discuss the Y, we have to open up for public comment again. So does anybody want to talk, hasn't spoken and wants to, or has spoken and wants to talk again? Okay. There being none, motion to adjourn will be in order. Do you have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, see you next time.